Time being seven o'clock, I can start the meeting on the Oxford Board of Selectmen for August 18th, 2020. And you just give me a minute. Pursuit into Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar options. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite these best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. And the first item on our agenda this evening is a special permit for animals by Ms. Perez at 10 Federal Hill Road. And entertain a vote to go into the public hearing for this matter?
Yes.
I need a motion first.
Sorry, I would need a motion to go into a public hearing.
All right. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Since we have a motion and a second, you want to public here and call for a vote?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative. We are in a public hearing and I will read the notice into the record. In accordance with the provisions of chapter three, section 3.8 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Oxford, Rachel Perez of 10 Federal Hill Road, Oxford, Mass., 01540, has applied to the Board of Selectmen to obtain a special permit for animals to keep up to eight ducks at Federal Hill Road, Oxford, Mass. The property is currently owned by Joshua and Rachel Perez and is identified as Oxford's assessors map 24B, partial A, 04, and at the registry of deeds in the book 61299, page 58. A public hearing will be held before the Oxford Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, at 7:00 PM by way of Zoom. Ms. Perez, are you there? You're not? Yes?
There is one participant on their phone who is muted.
Okay. Well, I will, I'll open it up that we've received all her information. I've looked through it and so, board members, you have any comments or questions? I don't see any.
Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I, um, I have a question, but it's actually directed to Ms. Perez, but I think she's muted. Um, I read through the information, very interesting that ducks don't necessarily need water, that I learned a few things on that. Um, I guess my only question was what she planned on doing with the ducks. Um, I see she's got it all sorted out, she knows what she's gonna do, but I was just more curious than anything else.
I can answer that if you would like. If Rachel comes up on, she could answer it too, but um, Sha, I know that she's, this particular breed of ducks that she's getting are known for their egg production, so she's getting the ducks for duck eggs, much like somebody would chickens for chicken eggs.
Okay, so she's, there's no plans to like, um, breed them or anything along those lines, Kelly?
She did not mention any of, anything like that to me.
Okay, okay, interesting. Excellent, thanks Kelly.
That's pretty interesting, so duck eggs are just like chicken eggs, pretty much?
They're, they're very similar, yep, yep.
Wow, huh, pretty interesting. All right, um, this is a public meeting, um, since I don't see any other questions from the board, is there anybody in the public out there that wants to comment about this special permit? John, do you have a question? No? Okay. All right, they're not hearing anything, I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Make that motion. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to close public hearing, I will call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative, this public hearing is closed. All right, board members, uh, at this point, not hearing any other comments, I would entertain a motion to approve this special permit for animals at 10 Federal Hill Road.
Make that motion. Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, any more comments? CNN, call for a vote then.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes, that's five in affirmative, she is permitted, and we thank you very much, Kelly, for helping us with that, giving us background information. Let's see, we are, um, a little ahead of schedule, so, um, how about if we go and start Town Manager's Report for the next 10 minutes?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all the board members. The first item on the agenda, as usual, is minutes. I would be looking to have the board approve the minutes for June 25th, and all members were present at that time.
Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make that motion. Second.
A motion and a second, call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
The next item has to do with minutes as well, it's the minute, um, meeting of July 21st, I'd be looking for the board to approve those, Selectman Daniels was not present at that meeting.
Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make that motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second, call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Stayed. Yes.
And I'll vote yes, five in affirm, uh, four in affirmative, one abstention, those are approved.
The next item has to do with executive session minutes, uh, the executive session of August 4th, all members were present, I'd be looking for approval of those executive session minutes.
Or an entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make that motion. Second.
I will call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative, those minutes are approved.
Uh, the last set of minutes, uh, has to do with, um, August 4th, the regular meeting, and all members were present at that meeting.
I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make that motion. Second.
Motion and a second, I'll call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative, those minutes are approved.
Uh, the next item on the manager's report has to do with a Stein, a stop sign request that came in, um, from a resident, uh, concerned about the public safety at the intersection of Wheelock and Fairlon Avenue. Uh, in your packets, you'll see the Oxford DPW has, um, also been contacted by the resident, and, um, DPW Director Sean Dyval has, uh, recommended the approval of the installation of the stop sign at each leg of Fairlon Avenue, rendering this a four-way intersection. Uh, and in accordance with the Board of Selectmen Policy Number 1910, a public hearing is not necessary, however, the input for the chief of police and the superintendent of schools is, uh, required, and as of this evening, uh, we have heard from both, uh, the police chief and also the superintendent, um, office, and both would make the recommendation and concur with the DPW director. So at this point in time, it would be the Board of Selectmen that would, uh, do the final approval for placement of that, uh, stop sign. As you know, the neighborhood is quite compact, and literally there are stop signs at a number of four-way intersections, this is close to, uh, the school as well, and hence, that's one of the reasons why we also had the input from the school department.
All right, board members, any questions or comments? Don't see any, then I would entertain a motion to approve this request to put stop signs at the intersection of Fairlon and Wheelock Street.
I would make that motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second, I will call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative, that is approved. Jen, could you hold on? Rachel Perez, uh, is, I, thank you for showing up, we have already handled your request, and the board has approved it, so, um, I just wanted you to know that, so that if you wanna stay on, you're welcome, if you don't, like I said, it's already been approved.
Oh, thank you, sorry, I had a technical difficulty there for a few minutes, but thank you guys.
That's okay, well, Kelly, Kelly, uh, filled in pretty good answering our questions, so I went.
How wonderful.
All right, so you're all set.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Kelly.
I wish you luck.
Oh, thank you guys, alrighty, have a good meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jen, you.
Sure, through you, uh, to the members, the, uh, next item has to do with a donation to our senior center, uh, we have, uh, received a donation in the amount of $1,000, uh, by, uh, for, for the senior center, uh, from the company Curaleaf, uh, and of course, in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53A, it would be this board's purview to accept that donation, uh, just so that you know, Curaleaf had reached out to, um, the senior center, wanted to be helpful, particularly in the area of nutrition and the provision of meals, and as you know, we have, um, changed our operation in the admists of, of the pandemic, and so this money will go to the donation account, uh, once it's approved by this board.
All right, I would entertain a motion to accept that cash donation in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 30, uh, 53A.
Make that motion. Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? Uh, call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative, we accept that, and we thank them very much.
And another, uh, item on the agenda I think we can accomplish is, uh, the Conservation Commission, uh, there is a, uh, recommendation and an actual application by Thomas O'Neill Jr. of 21 Lester Street, who is very interested in becoming a member of the Conservation, uh, Commission, and in accordance with our bylaws, uh, the Conservation Commission is comprised of seven members, as you know, and the members are appointed by the Town Manager, but subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, presently, there's, uh, six members, and so this would round out and complement, um, the wholeness of the commission, so I would be requesting that the board vote to approve Mr. O'Neill, I think it would be a, a wonderful addition to the Conservation Commission.
I would entertain a motion to appoint, uh, Thomas, uh, O'Neill Jr. to the Conservation Commission.
Make that motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second, comments? Call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Now vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, he is approved, and we thank him very much. All right, Town Manager, I think it's, uh, at just about that 7:15, um, point, so, uh, second item on our agenda is a nuisance stat slash dangerous dog complaint hearing for Leo at 8 Patton Street. This is requested by, uh, Animal Control Officer Kelly Flynn. Um, I will read, first of all, I'd like to ent, I'd like a motion in a public hearing.
Mr. Chair, could I interrupt you for just one second?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to, um, in order to avoid any sort of appearance of a conflict of interest, while I don't believe that there is any, um, but in order to avoid any perceived conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from this portion of the agenda.
All right, thank you very much for that, uh, re, um, so, again, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing on this subject.
I make that motion.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second, so I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And I'll vote yes, that's four in affirmative, one exclusion, so, we are now open as a public hearing, so I will read the notice to the record. Pursuant to chapter 140, section 157 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Oxford Board of Selectmen has received a nuisance slash dangerous dog complaint regarding a dog named Leo at 8 Patton Street, Oxford, Mass., 01540. A hearing will be held regarding this matter on August 18th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, at 7:15 PM, excuse me, at a remote meeting, uh, on Zoom, and every effort has been, uh, made to make sure all participants are able to zoom in with us. That being said, the next thing I would like to do is that anyone, um, who is going to speak on this matter, when you do so, you must state your name and your address for the record every time you speak, and then the other thing is that before we proceed, I would request that anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, raise your right hand, and please swear that you, you do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
I do.
Uh, Chloe? Okay, your, your microphone's on mute, just, hey, Joel? Yep, and your microphone's on mute also, just so you know. All right, uh, so I'm gonna start off with, uh, our Animal Control Officer Kelly Flynn, present your findings and your recommendations.
Okay. On October 3rd, 2019, at 6:26 PM, Oxford Police Department Dispatch received a call from Ms. Susan Spada from 5 Patton Street. Ms. Spada reported a tan pit bull type dog was loose in the neighborhood and charged at her on her own property. She stated that the dog was barking aggressively as it ran at her. Mr. Peter Funsom, 3 Patton Street, also witnessed the dog running around loose, barking. Ms. Spada told me that the dog ran back to 8 Patton Street, and I've enclosed a attached statement from Mrs. Ms. Susan Spada for you to read. Um, "I went to 8 Patton Street and saw the dog inside the house through the window. I spoke to Mr. Quentin Brunet, and he informed me that the dog, Leo, belongs to his girlfriend's son, Kyle Racine. He also informed me that Leo does not live in Oxford, he was just visiting that day." Um, and just to let you know, Mr. Quentin Brunet is not the owner of the dog, but he is the owner of the house that the dog resides in, therefore, he's considered the keeper. Um, and a lot of the laws talk about owner or keeper of the dog. So, on Thursday, September 26, 2019, at 2:03 PM, Ms. Chloe Dowd sent me a video showing Leo digging under the chain link fence that borders their property. The dog was also barking and growling, and appeared to be attempting to squeeze under the fence. I contacted Mr. Quentin Brunet, and he told me that they were going to put rebar there so that Leo cannot dig under the fence. And at this time, I'd like to ask Tim if he could show the video from September 26th, it might take a minute or so. Okay?
I've tried to put a couple more rocks in there, but it dug a hole in such excess the block there has done nothing, and it won't leave my property alone. It just keeps tracking us along the fence, and barking, and trying to get through my yard. Today is...
So, um, I don't know what everybody could hear on that, but that was Ms. Chloe Dowd was narrating there, and, um, Chloe and her husband Joel live right next door at 6 Patton Street. Um, so on Monday, May 18th, 2020, Ms. Dowd texted me a picture of the hole under the fence, and stated that her husband, Mr. Joel Dowd, informed her that the dog had been going wild all day, and that he has dug an additional hole. The Dows have two young girls that play out in their yard, and I expressed my concern about Leo getting out and hurting someone to Mr. Brunet. I also requested that Leo not be left outside unsupervised until they get the fence line secure. Mr. Brunet replied that he would take care of it, and there's a, there's a attached message, it's, um, of me texting Mr. Brunet and him saying that he would take care of it. And, uh, then if Tim could play the video from June 1st, 2020?
There, next to a little hut under the tree, which is just barking at the yard behind it, and nobody else in the backyard. That's the same dog that came up the driveway.
Uh, my purpose for showing that video was two things, number one, just to give a perspective of the, um, two houses, and, uh, I don't know if you saw at the beginning, there was the little girl, um, one of the Dowd's daughters was playing in the driveway, um, and the dog was, you know, in its own fenced-in yard, but at that point, I had asked them, please don't leave the dog unsupervised until you get the fence line fixed, and it, and it wasn't at that point. Um, so that was my purpose of showing that video. On May 29th, 2020, Ms. Dowd was in her yard when Leo charged at her, barking aggressively. Ms. Dowd also reported that her neighbor, I'm sorry, uh, there, there's an attached statement about, uh, when Leo was loose that time, and charged towards Ms. Dowd, and she's also present at the hearing tonight, so, um, she can go into more detail about that, but, um, Ms. Dowd also reported that her neighbor, Scott Foster, from 10 Patton Street, had an incident with Leo a short while ago. I called Mr. Foster, and he made a verbal statement to me regarding an incident on the weekend of May 23rd, 2020. Mr. Foster was working in his yard when he was startled by Leo charging at him, barking aggressively. Mr. Foster swung a shovel at Leo, which only made him more aggressive. At this time, Mr. Foster's neighbor from across the street came and got Leo and returned him to 8 Patton Street. I spoke to Mr. Racine about these two incidents with Leo, and asked him how the dog was getting out. Mr. Racine did not seem to be aware of the incident with Mr. Foster, but he replied that he believed that Leo may have escaped through the garage door or the sliding glass door during the incident with Ms. Dowd. Mr. Racine and I also spoke about electric fencing and some other methods to remedy the situation. On June 1st, 2020, I sent a text to Mr. Brunet and Mr. Kyle Racine, requesting a meeting with them and Ms. Kim Reed, who's Mr. Brunet's girlfriend, I think they might be married now, I'm not, I'm not sure, but, and the owner of the property. The purpose of the meeting would be to implement safety precautions for Leo so that no one was hurt. I did not receive any response. On June 4th, 2020, I sent a letter to Mr. Racine, letting him know that I was requesting a dangerous dog hearing. Included in the letter were several citations for unlicensed, unvaccinated, and dog-at-large. I also made another request to meet with him and take a look at the property so that I could make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, and I, that, that letter is in your package also, the letter to Kyle Racine. I did not get a response. On June 5th, 2020, I requested a dangerous dog hearing with the Oxford Board of Selectmen. On June 26th, Ms. Dowd sent me a video of Leo at her fence line, acting very aggressively towards her while she did yard work. The dog did not appear to be supervised by anyone, and no improvements had been made to the fence at that time, at least that I'm aware of. Um, if you could show the video from June 26th, please, Tim?
Today is Friday, June 26th, there's nobody in the backyard that I can tell, trying to do some yard cleanup to get our new fence in, and up comes that dog, right at me, won't go away, won't stop barking. Been barking for about five or so minutes now, and, nobody there. I even yelled through the open back door there, and, nobody wants to come out and take care of this. Today is...
So I, I just wanted you to see that video though, because, um, it shows the relative size and strength of the dog, he's, he's a, a pretty muscular dog, um, and, well, when he's in his own yard, if he's acting like that, you know, uh, you could say he's protecting his own property or whatever, but when he's outside of his own yard and he's charging at people, um, like that, you know, that aggressively, um, that's very concerning. Um, and I just wanted to make a note at this point that there is another dog named Cooper, who is owned by Mr. Quentin Brunet at this residence, that was deemed a dangerous dog by the Oxford Board of Health on July 23rd, 2013, and I did include a copy of that order. Um, so my recommendation to the board would be to deem the dog a dangerous dog, as opposed to a nuisance dog, uh, because although the dog has not actually bitten anybody yet, his behavior is, um, you know, you can't deem a dog a dangerous dog strictly for barking and growling at someone, but that's not all he has done, he's been loose three times and charged at people, um, and when Ms. Dowd talks to you too, um, she had to use a bicycle to protect herself, and the other man used a shovel, and the, the dog got more aggressive when he used the shovel to protect himself.
Is this where I should talk? Sorry.
I don't know, I'm not hearing any of the Selectmen right now.
Dennis, Dennis, you're on mute.
Sorry, yeah, no, I haven't the time to take my, my, uh, phone out, thank you. Um, okay, so thank you, Kelly, at this point, uh, we'll, uh, allow members of the public, so I'll start with Chloe, if you want.
Thank you. Um, my name is Chloe Dowd.
Chloe, Chloe, just give your, your name and your address for the record.
My name is Chloe Dowd, and I live at 6 Patton Street in Oxford, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so, starting last fall, the problems with digging the holes along the fence, um, but specifically on May 29th, I went out to collect the trash and recycle bins, we had our, our, um, trash came that morning, um, the recycling-
May 29th, I went out to collect the. Trash and recycle bins. We had our, our, um, trash came that morning. Um. The recycling must have just dragged a few feet from our property and kind of deposited the bin. Uh, like right between our two driveways and we have a fence that divides the two driveways. So I brought one, one bin up and then I went to. The divided properties where the bin was dragged and I dragged that other bin up. Um, I saw that it was really messy and gross inside, so I decided I'll. Hose it out. Um, I dragged it up probably about 52 feet diagonal from where it was. Um, went to get my hose that was in the front yard. Went to the front corner of my property, which was about five feet away from where I had the bin in the driveway. Started reeling up the hose and I could just feel something on the side. And when I looked up, it was that dog Leo. Just staring at me from right between our driveways. Eye contact for maybe three seconds or so. Um, and then it started to walk a few like paws and then. I realized very quickly that it was going to start running at me, so I forcefully said no. A lot louder than that. And as soon as I said no, it started running and barking at me, just like it barks at the fence all the time at our backyard. Um. My mind very quickly went into a. Terror stricken fighter flight type thing about a thousand different things ran through my mind at that one time. Um, to include, could I get into my van that was right next to me because it was unlocked? Decided that was a bad idea because the way the door would open, the dog would come right in the van with me. Um, couldn't get back to my mudroom because I'd have to turn around and run to it and I didn't want to not face this dog. Um, and then my daughter's. Full sized bike was directly behind me. And in about a second, I hopped over her bike. I picked the bike up. And it paused. Just a second. I was hoping that maybe it would just like feel a threat. And run away, but it didn't. It kept barking and still running towards me. And I pulled the bike up over my head and threw it full force. It hit the dog's face, neck, its chest. And it paused just long enough for me to be able to run the last five feet into my mudroom. I don't know where the dog went. It could have probably went back to its yard. Um. At which point, when I got inside, I called Kelly right away. My children could hear me screaming from outside as well. They were inside. Um. So I called Kelly and I told her what happened and then that's how all of this kind of started to come together and come out. Um. A couple of things about this dog though, from my own personal experiences and this has. We have zero issues with the people themselves next door. Um. But this dog. It stalks. It is very quiet until it wants you to know it's there. Anytime we're along our fence. It is dead quiet in the yard and then all of a sudden. It's barking at you through the fence and you've quite literally jumped 10 feet back from the fence. Um. And it just, it's constantly barking. All the time like that. Um. When. The trash usually comes, my kids usually come out with me to collect the barrels and for whatever reason, God truly on our side this day. They didn't come out because one of them would have fought to get that barrel out there. And when I think about it. That dog was out front somehow and somewhere just laying around and being quiet. And it was quiet enough for me to walk over and get the barrel. Bring the barrel into my driveway. Walk across my front yard to get my hose to bring it back. And then I felt it and that was, I don't know, like. Any other dog, why wouldn't they come out? Right as you're dragging a barrel away from their direct property view if they see somebody. Um, this, this thing is just terrifying. I have dreams about it once a week of it actually charging back into the yard. And biting me. And. I don't care if the dog is on their property, but I do care very much that it gets out somehow and. We need it to not because that could be my children. And if they were out there, I wouldn't have been able to save. Whichever one it was.
Understand completely, uh, Chloe, very much, uh. And that's why we're having this hearing, especially. It would be bad enough with an adult, but with a child, uh, that, that. Uh, I don't want to think about that. Um, so thank you for your statement. Is there somebody else? Uh, I see Joel. Would you like to comment?
Uh, just briefly at this point, um, a couple of things to. Reiterate or point out, um, that incident that Chloe just talked about, uh, from, uh, right around Memorial Day. Um. She was halfway down our driveway, well, 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 onto our property. I mean, our driveway is. Two car widths wide. You could probably fit 10 cars or so in our driveway. If you had to, and she was at the corner of our house. She was probably. I think we measured it actually. It was probably. At least 50 feet onto our own property, so. Um. So that was number one. And, uh, as you heard Chloe discuss, uh, it was. A completely unprovoked. Uh, incident. She was, you know, essentially minding her own business on our property. And just to reiterate something Chloe also said, um. We have zero problems with these neighbors as human beings and we have no ill will or animosity toward them. We're not looking to get anyone in trouble. We, the only outcome that Chloe and I, I think, uh. Really hope for is just to be safe on our own property or, you know, walking down the street with our children. Um, I've even said to, uh, to Kelly, like, we're not looking for fines or anything like that, like. Doesn't accomplish anything, at least for us, like. That's not what this is about and we really hope to not have future problems with our neighbors. We, we want to be good neighbors. We just want to be safe. Um. The, the thing I guess that is. Most concerning to me is, as Kelly had mentioned. Um, they had another dog, a Cooper, uh, deemed. I forget if it was either a nuisance or dangerous back in, I believe it was 2013. And my understanding is there were certain. Um. Rules or restrictions that the town imposed on, I think the property, if that's the right way to say it. To contain Cooper because, uh, he had had some issues as well with, uh, neighbors and other people. So it, it. If those things were being followed, it, it really just begs the question, how did another dog even get loose? Um. So that it's concerning that there are already. Restrictions imposed, if you will, and. Any dog. Um, has still gotten loose. Uh, from the property and. And caused an issue, so, um. I think that's, that is all I need to add at, at the moment. Thank you. And I apologize, uh, Joel Doust from 6 Patton Street.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much.
My apologies.
Forgot to ask. All right. Thank you. Um, all right. Uh, the homeowner is here. I don't see a name of it.
Uh, hello, my name is Suzanne Spadella. I live at 5 Patton Street. I live across the street from the Dous.
Okay.
And, um.
You're a, you're a neighbor, not a homeowner. Not the homeowner.
Oh, I'm a homeowner. No, I'm a, I'm a homeowner. I live across the street. Yes.
Yeah, but you're not the homeowner of this dog.
No. Oh, no, no, no. God, no.
Thank you. All right. No problem.
My dogs would never do that.
I'm just trying to clarify. Thank you.
No, okay. All right. So, um, I'm the, um, neighbor that, um, over a year ago, um. I, I unfortunately, um, had an encounter with this dog. And, um, I was just pulling in some groceries and then I. Went to get my trash bin, you know, the, the end of the driveway. And as I'm walking in my front, this is my front door, um, my, walking down my walk. I just look up and, and it's, and it's funny that Chloe mentioned that this dog is very quiet. Because whether I wasn't paying much attention. But next thing you know, I don't hear any, you know. Galloping or anything of, you know, you could hear something coming at you. I look up and there's this dog in front of me, I'm going to say. Between eight, about six to eight feet away from me. In my yard. Growling and barking and clearly, um. You know, uh, as an animal, it's, it's actually, you could tell that it was scared and. You know, feeling threatened and just. Whatever, but it was just. Barking and growling and the teeth and everything and I'm, where did this dog come from? And then when I looked up, I happened to see. Uh, and I apologize, I'm not sure who the neighbor is, but they were in their car. In the street, on, on Patton Street, in front of my house, they had stopped. And I looked up. And I saw her, her window was down and I, I looked at her and said, don't move. Don't move. Please don't leave. And she just stood there because obviously the dog must have run in front of her car for her to stop. Or whatever. I don't know, but. And I, and I said, if he attacks. Someone is there to call, you know? The police or whatever. That's the only thing that went through my mind and she stayed there. But when she responded. To me, the dog heard her. And. Then started dashing towards the car, at which I turned around and ran back into my house. And then the dog, I'm watching the dog circle her car and she rolled up her window real quick. And then, uh, finally he, as he was running all over the place in everybody's yard and he went into the Dous yard and. And he went over to, uh, my next door neighbor, Peter, uh, who lives, I think, believe 3, uh, Patton Street. You know, he has a fence. It's all fenced in and, you know, so. Then he ran back and when I realized whose dog it was, they ran across the street to 8 Patton Street. And he kept barking and the gated. Area that they have, the fenced in area in the front of their yard was closed. And he was barking and running around and barking like he couldn't get back in. And he ran around to the back, I guess, and then he came back out and of course I'm in my house watching all this, so. Um, and then of course, at that point I called, um. Kelly Flynn. And, um, you know. And, you know, from there it's just, you know, I was in the house and then when she finally came, um. I believe that the, well, not the owner, but whoever that gentleman is. Pulled in with his SUV, big truck and. And then the dog was in the house, um, you know, but then she came and then she had the conversation with him, but. I, I'll, I'll tell you, I. I, I, I was just, I, I froze and, you know, obviously I didn't panic because I know that. Animals can sense your fear and all that, so. Uh, you know, but. I'll tell you, uh, to be threatened and to be attacked or. Possible attack in your own yard. That's concerning. And we have a lot of children and I'm not saying that this dog would attack. His, the children that live in that house. They, he probably wouldn't because he knows them. But he's obviously not. Socialized whatsoever with any other neighbors. Everyone has dogs in our neighborhood and it's okay. That's not a bad thing. I'm an animal lover. I feed my chipmunks, squirrels and rabbits in my backyard. I love all animals, even dogs. It's not that, it's just, just like Chloe said, it's. If you, if you're not going to feel safe, working in your yard, doing yard work. I don't have a fence around my yard. I mean, other than the back and that's all everybody else's fence and then. In the back, I do have a privacy fence, but my front, I don't. And. I'm feeling, my God, this dog could show up without me even hearing it. And look up and there he is in my face, ready to attack me if I'm, you know, planting flowers or doing whatever. So it is disturbing. It is disturbing.
All right. And thank you very much for your comments. Uh, anyone else in the public? Okay, I don't see any. Again, is the, uh, dog owner here? Uh, Mr. Racine or the homeowner, Mr. Quentin? Uh, either one of you here?
Quentin Brunette, 8 Patton Street.
Yes.
Kyle shouldn't be here, but I was. I don't see him. Uh, I can't deny any of that. He has gotten loose. And, and I am doing everything I can. And I hammered a bar along a perimeter fence so he can't dig. I bought 90 feet of six foot stockade fence. It's in my front yard. I'm ready to install it this weekend. Locked all the gates. I'm doing everything I can to keep him in the yard. I'm so sorry.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that information and trying to be proactive like that. Um, is there anyone else?
Kyle, speak up.
Um, excuse me?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think, um, there is another participant, um, under Kyle's iPhone, but he's muted, so I don't know if he has the ability to unmute himself.
Oh.
He has to do it himself. I think you have to instruct.
Yep.
Kyle, you gotta unmute.
Down in the lower left-hand corner, um, Kyle, in the lower left-hand corner of your screen. There's a little thing that says to click to unmute or mute. There you go.
Oh, yes.
Excuse, excuse me, who are you?
Yeah, just to add on. Uh, Kyle Racine, 8 Patton Street.
We get that?
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Kyle.
Uh, yeah, just to touch on what Quinn said about the, uh, security hat. We added the, um, the rebar. All around the fence, there were like three foot pieces. Um, with the sliding door too. He is able to open himself, so we've, uh, taken a, um, piece of wood and put it in the, the sliding door frame. To, uh, to keep it shut, so, so that way he's not able to open himself. Uh, yeah, and I remember we, I talked with Kelly a little bit about, um, and I think putting the fence as well, uh, but. An additional fence for us in the yard, just so he, he can't get out that way also.
All right. Thank you. Again, uh, thank you for trying to be proactive and talking to Kelly. Uh. She's the important person for us as board members. So, thank you. Is there anyone else, uh, that would like to speak on this matter? All right. Then if that's the case, I would entertain a motion, uh, to close a nuisance, dangerous dog complaint hearing for Leo.
Make that motion?
Second that motion.
I have a motion in a second, so I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
John?
I'm, I'm confused. Why are we calling for this motion without any discussion? What action are we taking?
We're, we're just closing the public hearing. So the public is no longer discussing anything.
Okay. But we're not done with this hearing yet.
Oh, no, 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 no. We're just closing the public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Did I go along with it?
Yes, and I will vote yes. Four in affirmative, one abstention. So the public hearing is closed, um, so now. Um, we'll go to the board to discuss what we feel about. Leo, whether this is a nuisance or a dangerous dog. Board members.
Chairman?
Yes, John.
Um. I'd like to direct this to Kelly. Um. When she gave her initial, um. Review of what's going on. Uh, I didn't quite understand. The relationship. With the dog. And the owner. Of the dog and the homeowner. Could you please? Go over that again?
Sure.
Secondly, I'd like to know if the dog is licensed here in the town of Oxford.
The dog is licensed now. He was not licensed. He's been licensed in the past. The license lapsed. And they did renew, Kyle did renew his license, I think about a month or so ago. So he is currently licensed.
At, at the time of the complaint. Was the dog. Licensed?
No, he was not. Not at the time of. The complaint from Chloe Doust. So he did get a citation for that.
Okay. So that's the dog's permanent home. Is that correct?
Yes. Now it is, yes.
Okay. And if, if my memory serves me correctly, we had an incident. A while back. With another dog, same location.
Yes.
Um, are these the same owners? Or masked the animal?
No, they're not the same owners. So Kyle Racine is Mr. Quentin's stepson. Who lives with them at, uh, 8 Patton Street.
Okay.
Um, and he actually owns Leo. And Mr. Quentin and I, I, I'm not sure. And Mr. Quentin and I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Quentin can tell me, I'm not sure if they're married now, but and Kim are the owners of the house that the dog lives in.
Okay. Then my question is, is that going to be the permanent future resident of this animal? Or is he only there temporarily?
I can't answer that, I guess. I think Kyle would have to answer that, but that's where he lives right now. That is his, that is Kyle Racine's home.
Yeah, Kyle Racine right here in eight Patton Street. I would say temporarily, I'm just, I'm saving up for a house right now, so I would say temporarily.
Okay. You're saving up for a house right now, but you're willing to put an investment in to ensure whatever has to be done to maintain security for that animal, so it's on your property and cannot get away?
Yes.
You're willing to make that investment? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there any reason why when that dog is outside of the home, it cannot be muzzled?
That is one of my recommendations.
To me, if the dog is going to stay there, even if it's temporarily, I really feel strongly that that dog should not be off that property without a muzzle. And, you know, I can understand the fear that these neighbors have. And it's just not right. If a young child or even adult gets attacked by that animal, there's going to be serious consequences here. And I think that we ought to handle this in a very serious manner because somebody could seriously get hurt. I'd like to hear what other members of the board have to say about this, but I certainly have my doubts about even keeping the dog in the town of Oxford. I really do. Unless somebody can convince me differently, I don't want a dangerous animal like that in my neighborhood or anyone else's neighborhood. And I yield to the board.
Well, John, that's the reason for our discussion. We have to make a decision whether this is going to be a nuisance or a dangerous dog. And I agree with you a hundred percent. This dog is in our, in our town. He is residing in our neighborhood, in the neighborhood. So we have to act on this. And whatever we do tonight, we'll follow this dog. So if this dog goes to another town or whatever, this information will go to that location. So personally, I agree. You know, I love animals, as people probably should know anyway, and, you know, and I love dogs, but I'll be the first to admit, I I'd probably crap in my pants if a dog came after me like it did after Chloe, you know, because that's a very scary situation. And so personally, I'm leaning towards a dangerous dog, but I'm only one member of the board, so that's why I'm opening it up to the board for discussion and then a motion.
Chairman?
Yes, Cheryl, please.
So first of all, I just would like to thank certainly everyone who came forward and and I think that, you know, I'd like to thank the Dousts for being so kind in terms of separating the people from the dog, so to speak, and, you know, and so forth. The dog has not hurt anyone as of yet physically, but emotionally the dog has. It's a very intimidating animal. And I think sometimes we tend to govern more towards the animal or the pet than we do towards the people. And clearly, this dog poses a significant threat. Again, maybe not physical, maybe it's not to the point, maybe it would never attack anyone, but it certainly shows enough. Unfortunately, it certainly shows some serious aggression. And I'm not horribly thrilled that the dog is within the confines of the town. However, I am in, at this point, I am in agreement with the animal control officer's suggestions. I think that she poses some very good thoughts here. And, you know, I am heartened by the fact that the current owner and the keeper of the dog is willing to do that. But I think it needs to be monitored very closely. And I think that only by doing these things will these neighbors have any type of peace of living within their neighborhood. So again, I'd like to thank everyone for bringing this to us and being so factual with it. But I'm in agreement with the ACO. I think this dog is dangerous. And I think that's the way we should consider it. Thank you. I yield to the board.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Mr. Chairman? I don't have much to add. I just wanted to know that I'm also in agreement. It sounds like the dog's caused emotional damage to the neighbors. I'm confused a little bit as to why if Cooper, if there was stuff put in place for the dog Cooper that was also deemed a dangerous dog, why is there still, why is Leo now able to get out of the yard? Why are those still not in place? So I know they're putting in the additional stockade fence, additional fencing. I don't feel a whole lot of comfort with that. But you know, I just feel like something bad's going to happen and even though we're putting restrictions on right now, it's not stopping it, so. I'm in agreeance with the board, though, dangerous dog, so.
All right, well, I'm going to entertain a motion to claim Leo a dangerous dog.
I second that motion.
So we have a motion in a second. Any other comment from the board?
Mr. Chairman? Do you want to, do you want us to read the recommendations that Kelly has, or do you want that in a separate motion?
Nope, that's separate. We gotta declare it one way or the other first.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you. So this call is to claim Leo a dangerous dog. So I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one abstention. So we are proclaiming Leo a dangerous dog. So at this point, I would ask probably Kelly, do you want to go through your recommendations before we decide what we will do?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
So my recommendations for the board are as follows. Number one, that the dog be humanely restrained, provided however, that no order shall provide that a dog deemed dangerous be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree post or building. And then I put a little notation in there. Because the dog appears to have gotten loose from the garage at least on at least one of the occasions, I would recommend adding more fencing to the existing fence in the front of the property to add, to act as a catch area in the event the dog got out of the door by accident. And I don't know if you guys can see the diagram that I sent. So there is a fence around, not the entire front yard, but a good portion of the front yard that was put there because of Cooper, so that the dog could not get out of the front door. Unfortunately, I don't, I honestly don't know how Leo has gotten out the last few times, but in an effort to prevent him from being able to do that again, I propose that we add additional fencing so that the whole, basically the whole front yard is fenced in. And I do know that the garage doors open sometimes when I've driven by there and that could be how he got out. So that would make a containment area. If the garage was open and the dog accidentally got out in the front yard, the whole front yard would be fenced in wherever there's any kind of opening from the house.
So Kelly, if I can interject here just for clarity on my part. So we're talking then probably of them putting a gate across the driveway.
If they want to.
Should be closed so that there's no way that dog can get out.
Right, if they want to be able to drive a car down their driveway or get into the garage, they would have to have a gate there. Yeah.
All right, just for clarity, thank you. Continue.
And then number two, that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog. Provided however, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper. Provided further that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof and if such enclosure has no floor secured to the sides thereof, the side shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet and provided further that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. So they actually have an old pen. I'm not sure what condition it's in now that they built for Cooper. That was like a ten by ten pen with a solid floor and a roof. If they want to have a dog in the outside yard, according to the state law, they have to put the fence two feet into the ground. It doesn't specify what kind of fence, it just says sides. I have not, I tried to get over there to see the rebar and so far I haven't been able to connect with Kyle's actually in California right now and Quentin is at home, but anyway, I wanted to check to see how secure that is because I don't know how secure it is. I'm thinking it probably would be secure, but you'd have to do it, you know, every, I would say like every six to eight inches because the dog, if you make it a foot wide, he could dig in between the rebar.
Right.
The other thing is, you know, they could dig up the yard and, and put chain link fence down in. But like I said, I have not had the opportunity. I've tried to meet with them, but I have not had the opportunity to check out the rebar to tell you guys, yes, I think it's very secure, or no, I don't think that's going to work.
Just interject, Kelly, looking at that video of the white fence, I know what rebar is and I don't see that as being sufficient. I think it's something that they have to dig down and put even chain link or plywood that goes right down into that ground against that white fence, so that.
I'm sorry, so the white fence actually belongs to the Dousts? So there's a double fence there, but the other sorry, Quentin Brunette, they have a chain link fence on the other side of that. You couldn't really see it very good in that particular picture. So the rebar could go down by the chain link fence and be fastened to the chain link fence or go weave in between it maybe and then go into the ground?
Well, it just looked from the video I was looking at, like the dog's nose is almost under the Dousts' fence, you know, that's why. I thought that their fence was being acting as a barrier, so there is a chain link that goes behind that also.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm sorry to interject.
That's okay. Number three, that when removed from the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device, having a minimal tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. Number four, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer or other entity identified in the order information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime, including but not limited to photographs, videos, veterinary examination, tattooing or microchip implantations, or a combination of any such methods of identification. In this instance, I would recommend, I do have some video that we saw, but I would like a couple of good pictures of the dog and a microchip implanted.
Thank you very much, Kelly, for your recommendation. I'll open it up to board members for questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Cheryl.
Kelly, I don't know if if this is a fair question to ask, but I'm going to throw it out there. I know Kyle mentioned that he was, he already had some fencing on his front lawn and he was planning on doing it this morning. What would you, do you have a recommendation for how long we should, you think it would take for the owners of the dog or the keeper of the dog to do these items?
Well, I do think that this has taken longer than usual to get to this hearing due to different circumstances, illnesses and stuff like that, but so I would like to do it as quickly as possible because I'm very concerned about you know, the neighbors and the children, so. I know, I did see the stockade fencing on the, in the front yard when I drove by there earlier, like today or yesterday. So they have that and he said he was, he was planning on working on that this weekend coming up. So I'm thinking maybe a month, I, at the most, month, two weeks, a month.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. Okay. All right. Thanks, Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. In that same regard, Cheryl, maybe the new fence, in the new fencing, I would, you know, allow a few weeks or a month. But when looking in regards to the dog out in the back, I mean, like Selectman Daniels said, they had a previous dog where they, they should have that area where the dog can be confined. Or again, it should be tethered immediately. I don't see, we should be waiting on that. The fencing, I would agree with personally. But, you know, the other things I see as something that can be done right away. And that add a little more maybe security for the surrounding families, I would hope. That's my two cents on that.
No, I agree. I agree. I mean, I'm thinking fourteen days for the fence is what I'm thinking. And strong communication to the ACO in regards to progress. And if there's any delays, we should be notified immediately. But he's, he's got to stay in contact with her. And if not, then he's, there should be some consequences for that. He might find himself back in front of us unfortunately. You know, but, okay.
I think that is very reasonable. I would, I would definitely concur with that. You know, that gives him plenty of time and you're right, it's, it's been an ongoing problem. And we need to really stay on top of this. I agree. Any other board members got comments? Then hearing none. I would make a motion that, or I would entertain a motion, I should say, that we agree to the four items that Kelly has mentioned. In that we give the homeowner or dog owner the fourteen days to do the fencing, but the other items in the motion should be done immediately.
I second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I, I'd like to amend that. I agree with you and I would also like strong communication to the ACO about progress on these items too.
I would definitely amend my motion to meet that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if these, if these items are met within the two weeks, we would entertain coming back, bringing this dog back to us. Uh, bringing this dog back to us, is that a grant?
I agree, yeah, I second.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, with that, we have a motion and a second, and I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And I'll vote yes for any affirmative, one man abstention, um. So that is our criteria for this, you know, dangerous dog. We thank all the people for your comments and, um. We will stay on top of this is the only thing I can say, Kelly is excellent, as I'm sure many of you would say that, she comes to your. Uh, your residence as quickly as she can and she will, uh, she will keep us well informed. So, thank you, thank you, Kelly, appreciate all your hard work.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. So, the next item, gender, when I find it, is. Our gender a little behind is the, uh. Cannabis cultivation license presented by Kenneth Lucas, CEO of BVO LLC. Welcome, Lucas, I know you've been sitting there patiently listening.
That's okay, uh, my first name's Ken, my last name's Lucas.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before Mr. Lucas does his presentation, just to give the board some context. Um, Mr. Lucas has, uh, been in touch with my office, uh, and has, uh, approached, uh, some local. Uh, property owners about his, uh, very strong interest in actually establishing a, um. Cultivation business for marijuana in town, this would be the first. Uh, business of this type, uh, related to this specific industry. Um, which is the marijuana production industry or manufacturing industry, um, this would be the cultivation side of that. Uh, this is a presentation, uh, because the company and the owner of the company is interested. Uh, in this board being able to have in the not so distant, uh, future. A, um, potential vote for establishing a host agreement, uh, for this particular. Um, type of business, uh, which is to be located at Ford Pioneer Drive, but I'll let Mr. Lucas. Who has met with me, um, explain the company and, um. Uh, hopefully, uh, we'll be able to answer any questions this evening and then come back before the board, um, at a subsequent date. About trying to, um, solidify the interest of the board and whether to proceed forward with a potential host agreement. To be negotiated in my office, and with that, um, Mr. Lucas, welcome, uh, back.
Oh, yeah, hello. Um, so, do you, you have my, are you able to view the PowerPoint presentation as I speak?
Yes, I, I think we have, Tim is going to load that and that, there he goes, he will.
So, um, just a little bit about myself, so, for a long time, I've been passionate about cannabis. Um, as well as owning a business, um, I own a business, I, I started a business in two thousand thirteen. That have been operating it ever since, but naturally as ca, as cannabis became. Uh, medical and then legalized recreationally, I had an interest in, um. In opening up a cultivation, it's kind of been more or less a dream of mine for a long time, so, um. The name of the company is Bay State's Very Own, it's a cultivation company located at Ford Pioneer Drive in Oxford, Mass. Um, the name of the company just kind of represents our values, we're from Massachusetts and we take pride in that, um. So we'd like to represent the region with professionalism and, and a high quality product. Um, so the next slide is our goals, so. First, uh, obtain approval from local government as well as the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission for a tier two cultivation license. Develop a successful commercial, uh, cultivation facility for cannabis. Um, to be fully compliant with all state and local requirements, um, obviously there's steps to be taken. The first one, we, we need to, to gain local approval, um. Being compliant in Massachusetts is extremely, extremely important, without compliance, you can't run a, a cannabis, any cannabis business. Um, because of the regulations and laws that go into testing and security and everything else, um. So the next slide is mission, our, uh, our mission, um, so. This, oh, I can. There we go, alright, uh, to be an industry leader by cultivate, cultivating, producing clean, high quality can, uh, cannabis. With the most efficient, cost-effective methods and strategies. Um, an important part of our overall mission is to be a good corporate citizen to the communities in which we operate as well as the markets we serve. Um, and, uh, kind of a theme you'll notice, um, we'd like to provide a craft, craft quality cannabis. To a recreational market that's saturated with mid-grade products. Um, like I said, this is more, ties into the goals, right now, the market in Massachusetts. Um, it's, it's saturated with a lot of mediocre and low-grade product, uh, and that's just how they rolled out, um. The industry in the state, um, a lot of like big business and. Producing at really hot, large scale, like fifty and sixty thousand square foot grows and. And the quality of the product just seems to, uh, deteriorate when you have such large growths. Um, alright, so the next slide is our products and services. Uh, BVO LLC will have the ability to vegetate between three thousand six hundred and four thousand three hundred and twenty plants. And concurrently flower the same number of plants once fully operational. Uh, the company will grow fifteen to thirty-five different strains of cannabis and will have the ability to grow from seedling to finished smokeable or vaporable flower. Um, the company will also breed and phenohunt exclusive and exotic genetics. So, uh, being a, a craft cannabis company, uh, company. Uh, we have, we have quite a bit of knowledge into breeding and phenohunting, uh, highly desirable genetics. Um, these, these products is in, in other states that have. These markets, they, they tend to sell out immediately, um, you know, they have what's called drops and. They let them know, they, they'll let the public know which products are being dropped when. And, um, they tend to sell out immediately and, and that can kind of lead to, um. To some other revenue streams that I can kind of touch base on a little bit later. Um, the next slide is objectives. So, year one, secure the license and begin cultivating cannabis in a three. Single tier flying, in three single tier flying rooms that total four thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. Or one thousand six hundred and fifty square, square, square feet each. Um, year two, begin to expand flying canopy to two tiers, um, totaling nine thousand nine hundred square feet of flying canopy. Um, so that's like a racking system, um, so it's like shelves you see in like industrial buildings and people. They've started to grow on those ever since LED technology came into place, which, um, we intend on using. Um, year three, build out of tier two is complete and the facility is now operating at a maximum capacity. Uh, year four, BVO is now a trusted, consistent brand, uh, and we'd like to apply to expand operations. Um, along with being compliant with the state and local regulations and laws, being consistent, uh, in a trusted brand. Is pretty important to our core, core values, so going back to what I was saying earlier. Um, with a combination of quality and highly desirable products, um. You can more or less market the company nationally, even though you can't sell cannabis outside of. Um, the state, uh, it, it allows you through, through merchandising. You know, you, that, the possibilities with merchandising are endless and with Instagram and the internet, you can reach a national cannabis culture base. And once they start to tend, once they tend to catch on to your products, you create a brand and now people want to wear your t-shirts. Wear your hats and stuff like that, so that, that opens up, I mean, merchandising is endless, um. The business I started in two thousand thirteen, um. I had a lot less resources and I successfully created, um, multiple nationally branded products that sell in over two hundred stores. And I'm pretty confident that, uh, we could do it again. So year five, obtain proper licensing and build out additional facility, um, you know, so. We want to, uh, build out additional facilities and wherever we, we land, we'd like to keep all those facilities in close proximity. So that could open up additional opportunity for the town of Oxford later on, um. The next slide is financial summary. Um, so, we'll have, again, three, the, some of this is educational, um. And also it's good information, so we'll have three flying rooms that target five harvest per year each. The company, we have a goal of ten harvest for the first year operational, fifteen for the year. Following that single tier production, the company will be capable, capable of producing a hundred and eighty pounds of flour per room, per harvest. By the start of year three, each room will produce three hundred and sixty pounds from each, um. And so the rule of thumb, if you're operating a facility, you really want to be able to hit three pounds per light. Um, in fifty, and five harvests per room, per year, that's kind of like the rule of thumb. So at three pounds per light and fifteen harvests per year, the facility will produce five thousand four hundred pounds of flour. For the current market value of four thousand dollars per pound, which is actually more than, over four thousand a pound. Our gross sales will exceed twenty-two million, um. So the, exceeding twenty-two million, a lot of that has to do with the fact that after a few years, we can, um. We, we do believe we'll be able to brand our, our company nationally, um, and have additional revenues from merchandising and other outlets. But, um, so, the byproduct, so when you harvest, uh, when you harvest a plant. You dry it and then you trim it, that trim also has value, um. It's impossible to predict which strains produce how much trim and how, what percentage they'll extract that. They extract the trim into constant, into a concentrated form and then, you know, you see the vape cartridges people always putting in their mouth and. People make edibles out of concentrates as well, so, um, with the additional sales from trim, uh. We could easily exceed twenty-two million in the fir, uh, in the third year. Um, the next slide is our financial summary, did I miss something? Um, no, no, um, so yeah, I, I, I know you guys are pretty, uh, just mainly interested in gross. But again, I have some information, just, uh, just so you, so you have it. But the cost to produce one pound of, uh, trimmed cannabis is six hundred dollars. Market value, we're, we're at an extremely high value right now, at, it's about four, the dispensaries are selling. Pounds to each other for between four thousand and five thousand dollars. Um, it should remain around four thousand dollars for three to five years and then even off around three thousand for the quality of product that will. Be selling, um, you know, some of the bigger facilities that are growing less quality product, um, obviously it won't be sold for as much. Um, so the next slide, again, these are just positions, um. This is about what, what it would take to operate the facility, a few more positions on the back end, obviously. But, uh, this is kind of how we have it planned out, we would have about one point one five million in payroll by the third year. And then, so the next slide, um, this is our diverse, uh, just a, a, a small portion. Um, of our diversity plan, it, the diversity plan is something that's very important to the CCC as well as us. So, the company plans to provide job opportunities to minorities, women, veterans, people with disabilities, a member of the LGBTQ plus community. Um, as the company grows and adds jobs, we reserve twenty percent of all new positions for people who fall under these demographics. And the goal of the company will be to, will be to offer fifty percent of opportunities for advancement to management and executive positions internally. Um, okay, our next slide is another one that's important, this is our plan for positive impact, so we have two goals included with our plan. Uh, number one is encourage volunteer engagement for employees and two is scholarship for botanical business management or other classes related to the cannabis industry. Um, okay, the next slide is our, is our, um. First goal, the community engagement, so our volunteer engagement program is designed to keep management employees engaged in volunteering in Oxford-based nonprofits. To support the community, all members of management employees will be able to schedule up to four hours of their paid time per month in four-hour blocks to low. Uh, volunteer at local nonprofits, um, again, that's just to keep our, uh, our employees engaged and, and giving back to the community. Um, the next slide is community, uh. Scholarship program, yes, whoops. Sorry, um, our, so our scholarship program for botanical cannabis business management or other classes related to the industry. Will encourage the education in these sectors for applicants within the town of Oxford. Uh, we plan on making yearly contributions of point five percent of funds from past year's annual, annual profits. Available during the coming year for scholarships, capping at ten thousand dollars per year. Um, so that's kind of our plan for, um, positive impact and diversity plan. Uh, the next, the next slide is the compete, uh, community impact fee. Um, so in order to mitigate the anticipated impacts of the facility on the town and all, all aspects. The company agrees to pay a three percent community impact fee on the gross annual sales of all transactions from the facility. The initial community impact fee agreement should last a period of five years. Um, BVO would agree to sign additional community impact fee agreements at the conclusion of each five-year term. The gr, uh, agreed upon amount will not be reduced below the previous agreement, um. We would agree to make quarterly payments to the town of Oxford for the impact fee. And lastly, upon receipt of licenses, licensing to operate from the CCC, the company agrees to make an initial payment. Towards subsequent impact fees going forward, the amount is subject to determination. Um, so, the last slide is our, our green waste, um, this is. A CCC regulation and, uh, it's recycling in general in the earth is important to me as well, so, um. There is a lot of byproduct and waste per, uh, produced from a facility like this, so. Um, kind of the procedure is to grind, you grind up all the byproduct, um, and you contract an environmental waste company, they mix it with the gore. An organic material and dispose of it, um, in compliance with the laws, so, um. That is, um, that is my presentation, uh, the two things that I didn't touch on, so. Um, my, my, the business I started in two thousand thirteen, it's ancillary to the cannabis industry, um. So I deal with a lot of dispensaries, cultivations and grows, um, as far as odor goes. They all, and ones in Massachusetts specifically, they all mainly use carbon scrubbers, um. Some UV scrubbing technology, um, and there's a few in Worcester that use like an odor masking product. Called Medizin, um, there's really no, it, it, it's one of the issues that gets brought up a lot, uh, rightfully so. But i- it's easier to, to tackle and conquer than people think. Um, and then lastly, uh, security, we, we've contracted American Alarm, which they have. Um, installed multiple security systems for massive grows, fifty thousand square feet in Massachusetts. They've gone, gone through, um, the whole, the whole ordeal and, uh, successfully. Installed multiple systems, uh, Andrew Klein, he's actually on the call, if anybody had any questions from him, he's my security advisor. Um, if nobody had any questions for Andy, he could go, uh, if anybody had any questions for me, um. I'll be here as long as you'd like.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you.
Um, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, uh, would like to, um, add in, I, I have not spoken to Mr. Klein. Although the town of Oxford has many a contract, uh, with American Alarm system, um. There were two pieces of the presentation that, uh, I was interested in hearing a, about tonight. And one of them would have been, uh, perhaps some comments from Mr. Klein about the security, uh. Mr. Lucas has been very agreeable and understanding that, um. You know, public safety, uh, related to all of the marijuana industry buildings is always of utmost importance to us. And of course cultivation is one of those, um, areas that we would be, uh, very much closely scrutinizing. So I, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to entertain or, or offer an ability, uh, to Mr. Klein to talk a little bit. About the experience the company has, um, forwarded with other marijuana, um, growing companies.
Sure, sounds like a great idea, Mr. Klein. You're muted.
Alright, there we go, and good evening, mic check, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, alright, uh, good evening, everybody, uh, Andy Klein, American Alarm and Communications, four eighty-nine Washington Street, Auburn. Right down, uh, Route twenty over by Crunch Fitness, yeah, so American Alarm has been involved in the cannabis. Yeah, so American Alarm has been involved in the cannabis industry for approximately five years now. We have well over 60 facilities that we are either doing primary systems or backup alarm systems for across the Commonwealth. Uh, we've also been engaged up in Rhode Island, or down in Rhode Island, up in New Hampshire. But, uh, our core focus has been the Massachusetts cannabis market. Uh, at this point in time, for me, I, I do about 40, 50 hours a week just in cannabis alone and other, and I do a lot more, uh, I work a lot. Uh, so at this point in time, American Alarm has done everything from small retail shops, uh, including some in, uh, uh, the surrounding area, um, all the way to, uh, the largest cultivation sites, uh, right now working on one that's 155,000 square foot out in Western Mass. Um, so we, we stake a reputation on these projects. We've put a lot of time and effort in. Uh, we're not afraid to say no if, uh, we believe a customer is not a good fit for us culturally with doing the right thing. I'm originally from Lester, my family lives right around the corner. I have family who live in Oxford, uh, my cousin like, uh, with her young family. I'm not going to go and put a facility that would keep me up at night, um, in your town just with my family ties, that's just not going to happen. Uh, the triple C regulations from, uh, minimum of 90 days storage on all the surveillance cameras, high definition, so 1080p or better, uh, all the way through the alarm system, uh, consulting on, uh, other non-security system issues and making sure that the, uh, uh, customers are thinking about not hiring people with, uh, a felony violent background that would disqualify them, uh, making sure that a customer, uh, is just thinking about, uh, the policies and procedures to put our system into good use. Because I can go and put in the most fantastic security systems, cameras, access control, alarms, et cetera. It's not going to do, look good if the customer doesn't use them adequately and accurately. So we've got the experience, we're looking forward to working with BBO, um, and, uh, we're your local vendor, so if, we, uh, we're pretty confident with this project, definitely feeling pretty good about it.
All right, thank you very much. Board members, any questions or comments for either Mr. Lucas or Mr. Klein?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Cheryl.
Uh, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Lucas, if that's okay?
Sure, true.
Mr. Lucas, welcome, welcome to Oxford. Um, I have a, a couple, um, we don't oftentimes get, uh, business owners in front of us that have, um, that are in town, I always like to just chat with them. Um, can you clarify for me, I know you mentioned something about, are you currently up on 4 Pioneer Drive or are you looking to rent space?
No, I, so, uh, we have that building under contract, uh, to purchase, it's in the process of being purchased. Um, we exchanged, we did a, I think it's 1030 exchange, a real estate, so we're just waiting.
1031?
1031 exchange on a building. So, uh, yeah, that, we should, we'll, we'll have that building secured probably within 30 days or 30 or 60 days, but it is under contract, um, and all that.
Nice. Um, is it, so I'm assuming that it's not contingent upon approval from us, correct?
Um, not anymore.
Got it, okay, I got it. Um, so are you planning on, up at the, once that property goes through, once that sale goes through, are you planning on putting anything else in there or is it just for the growth facility?
So, um, well, uh, let me clarify something. So we were go, we, originally in the contract, we had a contingent upon the approval of the town, uh, site plan of new selectmen, but we had a buyer, uh, we had a buyer for the other building, um, and it would save us money, a little bit of money in taxes. So we said, why don't we just buy it? We, we, we were able to obtain it for a pretty good price.
Yeah.
So it was, it wasn't that big of a deal. Um, as far as, so in, in medical marijuana, um, you can have, you can make edibles, you can make concentrates and you can grow cannabis all under one roof. Under recreational, it has to be three separate businesses, three separate LLCs. So, um, basically, if you wanted to open an extraction, you'd need to buy another building under another business name. So no, we will only be, the only thing that will take place, um, at 4 Pioneer Drive would be the cultivation of cannabis.
Gotcha, I gotcha. And did you say that you don't own any other, um, marijuana entities? Did you say that or did I, did I, or did I misunderstand?
Oh, so I, I own, I own a business, uh, and a large portion of our business is, it's ancillary to the cannabis industry. So we provide a lot of cleaning supplies, solvents, chemicals for extraction in the laboratories where they make edibles and make concentrates, um, and extract cannabis.
Got it.
It's ancillary, but no, as we stand today, I, I, I own no licenses in the actual cannabis industry.
Okay. Um, perfect, I think that's all I had, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, thank you very much. Any other board members, comments, questions? I guess not. Then with that, we, uh, would thank you very much, uh, Mr. Lucas and Mr. Klein for coming for us and presenting. Um, and a lot depends on what you can negotiate probably with our town manager and then after that you'll come back to us.
All right, well, I look forward to it.
All right, we thank you again for this evening, we appreciate it.
I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Ken and Andrew.
Okay, uh, bye, everybody.
All right, so that brings us back to, uh, Town Manager's Report.
Report, yes, thank you. Um, we left off on, uh, number eight, uh, of the manager's report, which, uh, relates to the Department of Public Work Updates. I just wanted to share with you just a couple of things. First of all, um, the DPW Director, uh, myself and the project manager in the DPW have been, um, working to try to obtain whatever grant money we can. Uh, the recent, um, state effort to try to support communities that have been hit by COVID, in particular the business side of communities, um, had launched a new shared streets and spaces program, even though we were up to our eyeballs trying to implement, um, all of the executive orders from the governor, uh, we did take the time to submit a grant application that would be helpful to us, um, particularly within the main street for improving our pedestrian safety, uh, and also, um, improving our ability, uh, for pedestrians, uh, to get to our businesses and our, um, local town venues. Uh, that particular grant request amounted to a little over $104,000. Um, keeping my fingers crossed, I know that there has been some discussion back from the state, um, to our DPW. So, uh, one of the main things that we've had a number of complaints about in the past, even prior to COVID, was because our main street is so wide, that pedestrians, when they're trying to cross it, um, can easily get across one side and oftentimes, uh, run the risk for their own personal safety and getting across, um, when they hit the, um, second, uh, lane of the traffic going the opposite way. So we have a number of, um, both, uh, solar-powered, uh, lights within the grant application along with audible, um, pedestrian, uh, safety crossings, uh, and along with, uh, improving ADA requirements, uh, at particular crossings. So again, this is important, uh, it's not every day that we get to try to envision how we can help get people to businesses and the like, and maybe we'll get some support from the state. Um, I want to thank the DPW once again for stepping up, uh, after a recommendation from my office to work with me, um, to see if we could get something together. The second item, um, has to do with just updating the board on the Rossen Avenue and Corbin Road drainage improvements. Uh, the bids were opened on July 30th for that, and as you know, that's a major project that, um, through our forums about the DPW headquarters when we had them, um, but we recognized that this has been a project after Charlton Street was done. It's been long in the, um, waiting for residents who had experienced years ago, uh, flooding from, um, 50 or 50-year storms. Uh, so that bid, uh, was actually awarded to AF Amarillo Suns, um, for a little over 200,000, um, and they will be proceeding on that project shortly. And if you go driving by, you'll see the large, uh, cement drainage, um, items that were replaced, uh, underground. Uh, I know that the Dudley Road project has been important to the board and just to alert you that the bid documents are being prepared, um, for the end-to-end repaving of Dudley Road. Uh, that bid, um, will, um, be actually going out on August 27th and the bid opening will be September 11th and the project is slated to begin at the end of September. Um, similarly, the Coburg Avenue, um, project, uh, is for a shim and overlay and those bid documents are being prepared, but once again, um, that is slated to be done, uh, for this fall. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, let you know that, uh, with over $8 million worth of DPW projects, we're trying to keep up and get them out, um, with our DPW Director who wears multiple hats, including being the principal engineer for the town for all projects. Um, the next item is just to alert you that the newest executive order from, um, Governor Baker, uh, because there has been an uptick in COVID, uh, cases in Massachusetts as of August 11th, that the limit for outdoor gatherings has been, uh, readjusted downward from 100 people, uh, to 50 people. That is a limit, um, on outdoor gatherings in particular and both on public and private properties this would apply. Um, once again, I've included that in your meeting packet, um, and that's just important for you to know as, um, residents continue to ask what kinds of adjustments we're making in the wake of COVID-19. Uh, the next item is just to let you know that the political calendar, um, for the September 1st, 2020 state primary has been, uh, published, uh, and it is on our website, um, obviously Saturday, August 22nd is the last day to register to vote for the state primary. So we want to encourage all the residents to get out and, uh, make sure they register to vote, um, or to request, um, a registration and you can pop that in the mail to the, um, town clerk. Uh, the other item is the political calendar for the October town meeting, since this board has set the meeting, uh, for October 7th, uh, the town clerk has published, uh, that and, uh, we want to make sure that we're aware that the warrant had been, um, opened by this board on August 5th and it is, um, closing on September 1st and the warrant, um, will be posted accurate, actually for that October 7th meeting on September 23rd. Uh, the next item, since we're talking about, uh, things that have been published by the town clerk, I know we, um, had informed the board about the, um, recent resignation, uh, alert that, uh, town clerk Lori Kelly had submitted to the board and I just wanted this board to know that it has, uh, the position has been posted, it was posted on August 5th and, um, had been posted in a number of places from Mass Municipal Association, the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association and the New England Association of City and Town Clerks. Uh, in accordance with, um, all of the requirements, since this, um, has been posted, I wanted to alert the board, we have not received any applications thus far. Uh, one of the things that I am concerned about is the fact that we do have a residence requirement within six months. Uh, that was an additional thing that was added to both the charter and the bylaw, uh, a number of years ago. And, um, my concern is if we don't get, um, an actual applicant and I may even, um, try to secure a firm to help us with a search, uh, there is, um, an ability for this board, uh, going forward as we, uh, start to enter into closer to the election season, um, even though our town clerk is here for the primary, she would not be here for the general election. Um, my concern is if we, uh, start to continue in this path where we don't get applicants, I spoke with legal counsel and legal counsel, um, has said that this board would be able, um, to work, um, towards, um, appointing a temporary clerk, uh, so that we would be able to have those duties fulfilled in the absence of having any, um, formal clerk apply and then be appointed by the town manager and jointly with the Board of Selectmen. That there is an MGL, uh, Chapter 41, Section 14, and, um, I have included that in your packet in the comments from, uh, Mark Rich, in which case, um, I would want to actually post for that position, uh, simultaneously, um, so that we will have both, um, actively, um, trying to recruit. And if we, um, you know, are not successful in recruiting a permanent, uh, this board is going to be faced with appointing a temporary and we need to do that, um, in order to hold an election. And I don't want to do that up against, um, you know, the barrel of, um, staring down the election, uh, in a very short period of time. So, and if we can do something, uh, where if there isn't even a temporary and the board approves that, they'll have the ability to work closely, um, with, uh, Ms. Kelly to, um, share, uh, the knowledge and wisdom of how the operations here would be run. So I wanted to alert the board of that and, uh, just make it known that we are doing everything we can, uh, to recruit, uh, but in the absence of having that, this may be on the horizon and I'll keep the board updated, um, in the success, um, or lack thereof, um, in trying to fulfill that position. We're not alone, uh, the town of Spencer had a similar kind of thing and, um, also could not obtain a permanent clerk because of that and, um, had to do a temporary. So I'm hoping that maybe even if we have a retired clerk, um, that's willing to do this, um, it'll be very important through the election piece anyway. Um, the next item is, uh, the Green Communities Update. I just, I know that sounds like something from the past, but it was a major ordeal. Um, I just wanted you to know that, um, I've contracted with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, which was very helpful, um, in putting our documents together, um, to obtain our grant. Uh, they are now, uh, going to be in charge of the reporting administration of the 163,880 dollar, um, grant, which means that we will be implementing all of those projects, they will be taking place and, um, formally completed, uh, by the end of January and then we will be actually applying for another 200-some odd thousand. So just a reminder, the grant, uh, does support a lot of the energy conservation measures that we're undertaking in our municipal buildings, streetlights and vehicle fleet. And, um, I thought that was important for you to know that we're moving forward with those projects despite the fact that we're still in the midst of a pandemic. Uh, the next item is just to alert you that I have been informed formally, um, by the Massachusetts Office of Disability, that they have once again announced their fiscal year 21 grant program. Uh, as you know, we submitted, um, a formal application last year for a variety of projects. Um, I had discussions, uh, because we did not receive that grant with the grant program. I've been informed that our grant, uh, requests were, um, quite, uh, significant and reasonable and that they gave me some pointers on what I can do to improve that. So just so that you know, once again, we're going to be applying for funding for accessibility updates for the town hall and separate out another project, um, planning, uh, grant to update our, uh, disability plan, which is quite, quite old and it needs to be updated. And I know the disability committee that you helped form will be very pleased, um, if we can obtain either grant funding. Uh, the next is a meeting for the Board of Selectmen. I spoken with the chairman about the fact that, um, it would have been being held, um, right on the day of the primary and, uh, of course subsequently after that, um, the following, uh, Tuesday, uh, comes on the heels of, uh, Labor Day. And, um, so, uh, after speaking with the board chairman, uh, we talked about it being too late to put off a meeting, uh, till like the third week of September. So, um, it was my recommendation to the chairman that we, um, host, uh, Wednesday, September 2nd as our next meeting, um, at 7:00 PM. Um, there, we were under the impression that there was a selectman policy that would prohibit meetings, um, the Tuesday after a Monday holiday, if it were not, um, you know, being able to be rescheduled. Uh, but we did find that there, there isn't really a policy, it was just an understanding. So I don't know if any of the boards have a problem with trying to meet, um, at least the day after the primary rather than primary night. And, um, and if, if we continue to have a problem with the day after a holiday, I don't know how the board feels if that was a problem in the past, but there's no policy, but sometimes people said it was a policy, it was just a handwritten note that we found. So anyway, I hope everybody would be all right with September 2nd at 7:00 PM on Wednesday. And if that is any, um, questions or comments about that, um, I'd be more than willing to discuss it and that would conclude my manager's report for the board.
Very good, thank you, John, appreciate that. And that leads us to Selectmen's requests and we'll go to Megan.
Good evening.
Evening.
I just have one thing and it's kind of fitting. Um, all week I've been planning on giving our police department kudos for just continuing to go out day in and day out and doing what they do and protecting our community and And despite the state of the country right now, they just continue to go out and do what they signed up to. And I just wanted to tell them how much I support them. And then I was reading our news and I saw the excellent job that Oxford did yesterday, right at the community center. And they truly did step up and do what needed to be done to protect our community, particularly our youth at the community center. So I just wanted to say that, um, Chief Sad and the rest of the department, your actions do not go unnoticed. You are greatly appreciated for everything that you do every day. And I do and will continue to support you and be thankful for everything you do. And that's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, Megan. Cheryl, you're up next. You're muted, Cheryl. You're muted.
Look, I, I unmuted myself to say I'm good. I'm good.
Well, we know you're good, so you, you have nothing this evening, right?
I, I have nothing this evening. I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That goes to Mike.
I'll make it easy on you as well. I, I have nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, uh, we're talking about the next meeting being the second. I don't know if there was any vote or if we decided that that's the meeting night or, uh, what's going on with that?
Well, that's, that was, that was my, uh, you know, talking again to the manager. I hate to think of waiting a month, uh, between our meetings. So again, with Labor Day and stuff, we were trying to work something in. So that was my recommendations unless the board is really.
I have no problem with the recommendation, but I, it was just kind of left up in the air. Is it going to be the second? I have no objection to the second. I don't know if any other board member does.
Well, that's my, okay, any other board member really object to that date? No? Okay. All right. Well, I was presuming we were just gonna contact or I guess I shouldn't have presumed. Sorry, John.
That's fine. Uh, the only other thing I have is I, I've noticed that, uh, they're approaching completion of, uh, the Howard Road at Route twelve intersection. It looks like they're ready to, to line the roads. Uh, the lights are blinking. They haven't been turned on yet, but, uh, everything looks like it's, uh, ready to go. So I don't know if the manager has an update on that, but, um, it would appear though it's ready to, to start within days.
Um, I had not been notified, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, for you to, um, Selectmen said. I have not been notified of the actual, uh, finalization of that. I do know, um, I've taken rides myself into that, um, area of town, uh, looking at that progress. Uh, I would be more than happy to reach out to the, uh, director to, uh, find out what the estimation is, uh, from the construction company for the finalization of, um, the project. If that would be permissible to you, I would be more than happy to do that.
Certainly, uh, long overdue and I'm sure that the neighbors in that area are going to be very pleased once those lights are functional because they've been going down, um, Bacon Street, cutting across, backed up all the way down, sometimes close to the bridge when IPG is getting out of work. So it's going to ease a lot of, uh, traffic situations in that area. So I'm, I'm looking forward to it and I'm sure that people who travel that road daily are going to be thrilled at the fact that it's going to be moving along very shortly. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you. Well, I got one thing and I, I've been known to probably do things I shouldn't, but I'm going to do it anyway. As many of you know, very, uh, close to my heart, my family's heart is muscular sclerosis, MS. And, uh, my family for years have been, we have a, uh, a, uh, nonprofit organization called Mum Squad. And every year we do a motorcycle ride to raise money for Mum Squad. We have raised, uh, in the past five years, close to thirty-eight thousand dollars, to donate to muscular dystrophy and muscular sclerosis, excuse me. And, um, so this year we had our ride on Saturday. We didn't have a get together or anything due to COVID, but we did have our ride and it was very successful. And if any of you are interested, uh, we have on our website, we're doing all our raffle items. And we have quite a few raffle items. You're welcome to go to, uh, mum squad, mum squad dot log. And you're willing to bid on them. You pay right through the internet, so you don't have to worry about that. Just check it out if you want. But the main point of my stating this is that the, uh, police department has, has helped us in prior years when we come through town, if they're available, they help us at certain intersections, one of them being Sutton Ave. And they were very, very helpful this year. I thank them tremendously. I back what Megan said, um, they, they're just a terrific force we have. You know, we get the information we got about what happened at the, uh, community center and then we have the information that what happened at the Cumberland Farms incident. And, uh, they're right on top of that. They're fantastic. They just seem to go around doing their jobs and, uh, we all live in this great community, nice and safe. So, um, just want to thank them tremendously for what they do. They are really, really good. But I also had to just throw that out there. So that's all I have. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call for vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Finally, in affirmative, we are adjourned. We thank all for listening and bearing with us this evening. And have a great couple of weeks. We'll, we'll see you later.